You guys ready? You ready Dante?
Okay.
Okay, great. Um, I call a meeting in order to the finance committee. Um, Clark will call and roll.
Chairman Wildenhain.
Yeah.
Council Moran.
Yeah.
Council Rubio.
Here.
Three in attendance.
Public input? All right. Council Rubio, number two.
And then number two, the finance committee returns the following resolution. Resolution authorizes city actions and financing documents in connection with the refunding of the Tuckett redevelopment agency. Revenue bonds issued to finance a portion of phase one A of the tide water landing project into a real call vote.
Most have been made by Council Rubio, seconded by Council Moran, that we take up uh the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh Mark or Si, which one's gonna?
Mark, Si. The um um give you the reasonable reason why we're here tonight.
Okay.
Well, the tide water bonds that were originally uh issued were done at seven and a half percent interest rate. This is reflective of the fact that there's relatively complex financing structure originally backing those bonds. Now upon completion of the project itself, the bonds had a provision whereby uh the state would step in and appropriate on an annual basis any shortfall in funds that weren't sufficient from the revenues that were generated within the district that encompasses the stadium itself.
Okay.
That's a substantial step up in quality. What that means, these bonds went from essentially being unrated to a investment grade rating of a double A minus likely. Uh and because of that, uh the city can refinance these bonds at a rate of under five percent. I'm sorry, the redevelopment authority can refinance these bonds at a rate of under five percent. Uh that will save a substantial amount of money over the course of the life of the bonds. Uh right now, our estimates put that number between three point five million and four million a year uh to the benefit of the general taxpayers in the state. Of course, revenues being generated on the backs of the Tuckett taxpayers themselves.
And the bond is for how long, thirty years with the term?
That is correct, right Karen?
Yes.
Yes. It stays within the existing term of bonds themselves. It doesn't extend it in any way. In addition to that, the bonds can still be refinanced at their original call date. Uh that was originally ten years out. Now it's about eight years out.
Okay. We're talking about three point five to four million dollars.
So could they, let me ask you a quick question. Could they, uh let's say we approve this, right? At the new rate, could it come up again? Could this happen again?
Yeah, in eight years, the bonds will be what's called callable.
Okay.
Means you'll be able to again refinance them. Um the way we're approaching this refinancing right now is through a lead transaction called a tender offer. Normally you'd have to wait ten years to get to the point where you could refinance. A typical publicly issued bonds, because there's only one bondholder, they're able to go directly to that bondholder to uh renegotiate this down proceedings. It's a great question. So we're preserving the option here.
Yeah, which is great. The potentially in the future too.
Is the three and a half million savings, that yearly?
No, that's in total present value of savings.
Any other questions?
No.
Yeah. Yeah, I uh again, this just, as you pointed out, so it it was uh they were unrated bonds. Now they're double A rating, which make them more attractive for them to go out. So it's gonna do nothing but put us in a better light to get in the reimbursement, I think. Sure. So uh um you guys have anything else you wouldn't like to add?
Yeah. I mean, the resolution is uh very simple. Uh as as I mentioned, it's the redevelopment agency that issued the bonds, but in connection with that financing, city sign various documents describing the redevelopment area, et cetera, and we would need to do the same thing in connection with this transaction. So this just authorizes that the various city officers to sign whatever is needed in connection with the financing.
So they don't.
I was gonna ask you, how does this come about though? Like, how do you get wind of it? Is it just something either monitoring or some somebody approaches you? Or how does that work?
Yeah, so we serve as the municipal advisor both to the city and to the redevelopment authority. Part of our job is interacting regularly with the street, those being the bankers that write these types of transactions to see what's available. This was a unique one in that there's only one bondholder. And so the underwriter that worked on the previous deal said that bondholder is interested uh in looking at whether or not it could work directly with the city um on this refinancing. They know that there's obviously been an improvement credit. They're willing to give a portion of the the benefit they gained from that proven credit back to the city. Uh it's administratively easier for them, uh and obviously yields a benefit for the taxpayers globally speaking. Uh and so that's how these types of things go down.
So this only comes about, like you said, in a unique situation when it's just a one bondholder. If there was more than one, then potentially it wouldn't, it wouldn't be something like this, right?
That's a perfect point. You could, and that does happen frequently, but it tends to be much more complex. That drives fees really high for folks like myself and bankers. The fees on a deal like this look almost just like they would for a regular bond issued to the state. Uh we're very cognizant of making sure those stay low, take advantage of the type of pricing that the state gets on its major bond issues.
We appreciate that.
We've worked very closely with the state with Joe Cadega from O M B as well as Kate who I have done some of its transactions, so.
Is there a particular fee to refinancing? This bond?
So the fee itself on the bonds, no. There's the overall economics of the transaction itself. It ended up getting split, but the fees for doing a transaction like this are the standard fees that you can see on any other bond issue.
How much is that look like?
Um in total, about six hundred thousand dollars between all the different parties involved in the transaction.
Any other questions?
I haven't.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to uh approve the resolution.
I will second.
Motion has been made by Council Moran, seconded by Council Rubio, that we approve the resolution authorizing city actions and financing documents in connections with the refunding of the Tuckett redevelopment agency revenue bonds issued to finance a portion of one, phase one A of the tide water landing project. Uh I call for approval on a roll call vote.
Chairman Wildenhain.
Yes.
Council Moran.
Yes.
Council Rubio.
Yes.
Three to zero.
No further business for the finance committee. Thank you very much for coming in. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very.
Good evening, welcome to our Freight Street Home for tonight's special Pawtucket City Council meeting. The first thing on our agenda tonight is public input. We have no one online and we have just one individual signed up in person, Mr. Michael Pompeley. Mr. Pompeley?
Now it is.
There you go.
Thank you. Since part of tonight's agenda is a presentation on the city's bonding capacity, which has been a topic of discussion lately as the city looks to build yet another new school building for Slater this time. I wanted to address something that concerned me about the latest update on the construction of our $330 million high school. It's concerning but unsurprising to hear that the project's already $12 million to $13 million unreimbursable dollars over budget, without so much as a cubic yard of concrete for the foundation poured yet. But the project team assured us that they're aggressively performing value management, identifying which corners that can be cut to keep the project under budget before they have to look at cutting programs, just like what was done at Baldwin as Councillor Gregor and the Woodlong community can attest to. What was surprising in their update however was the news that property acquisitions along South Bend Street are ongoing. During the entire planning process for the Unified High School, the school committee and project team assured everyone the project was being constructed entirely on city property and it was only encroachments onto the McCoy Stadium property that needed to be addressed. Now that the contracts are signed and the stadium is gone, why the sudden land grab? Especially when the updated site plan that was presented to the school committee doesn't show any work on these properties. Property as we all know is expensive and like cost overruns is unreimbursable from ride. And what else is the city expected to lose? The M-Vets Hall, the Right Spot Diner or the desperately needed housing along South Bend Street? According to the project team's report to the school committee, the city is already negotiating to purchase a three-bedroom house that's currently on the market for $299,000. Is there a good reason that the city would prioritize another land grab over allowing that to be an affordable home for a family? And what's the utility of a single parcel in the middle of the block unless the goal is to acquire the rest of it that's not currently on the market? I would ask the council as part of its oversight of the high school project to determine why or if these property acquisitions are needed. It's especially concerning that the city, excuse me, that the city when it level funds the school department year after year and micro-manages the $1,500,000 increase that was given this year would support a land grab that would cost at a minimum over $1 million. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're a little bit early. We will, we've got 10 minutes before we will convene this Pawtucket City Council, so sit tight.
The Finance Committee returns the following resolution. A resolution authorizing the city actions and financing documents in the connection with refunding of Pawtucket Redevelopment Agency revenue bonds issued to finance a portion of Phase 1A of the Tidewater Landing Project. I call for approval on a roll call vote.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Wilder, second by both Councilor Rubio and Councilor Maran, that the Finance Committee returns the following resolution with a recommendation for approval. A resolution authorizing city actions and financing documents in connection with the refunding of Pawtucket Redevelopment Agency revenue bonds issued to finance a portion of Phase 1A of the Tidewater Landing Project. We'll take this matter up before a vote. Who's kind of quarterbacking this from the administration? Zai or Mark? Gotcha. Thanks, Zai. You can just introduce yourself to the rest of the committee if you would, please.
Certainly. My name is Zai Komsyvorvong. I work for PFM Financial Advisors. We are the municipal advisors to both the city and the Pawtucket Redevelopment Authority on any matters regarding bonding that happens with the city or the redevelopment authority.
Gotcha. I know you just went through this with the Finance Committee a few minutes ago, but could you just give the rest of the body an overview of what we're doing here, what we're authorizing with this resolution?
In the most basic terms, what you're looking at is a refinancing of the debt related to the construction of the Tidewater Stadium. The debt itself originally was issued at an interest rate of 7.5%. That is comparatively high as opposed to what you normally see for a governing body when they issue debt because that debt was for a very specific project backed by very specific revenues tied to that project. Now, the original borrowing itself had a provision that once the project was complete, the state would step in with a pledge to make any appropriation for shortfall. What that means in short is that for whatever reason, the dedicated revenues from that special district weren't enough to repay the bonds, the state would step in and close the gap on that payment. What that means is that these bonds now have an investment grade rating, which lowers the potential interest rate on those bonds. So what we're looking at doing is refinancing the debt at a rate of currently seven and a half percent to a rate of less than 5%, taking advantage of that investment grade rating and helping to deliver back to taxpayers of the state roughly 3.5 million in total.
And that was because they were riskier bonds at the outset, whether the project would be completed or not.
And now the state as the parent entity, now that the city has done its part working the redevelopment authority to finish that project, is willing to step in and back up those bonds, which obviously makes them investment grade.
And these are not general obligation bonds of the city taxpayers. These are these are PRA bonds that are backed by the state, correct?
That is correct.
Anybody have any questions? Council Gregor?
So I was just trying to get clear on it. So essentially, I was just curious. So the PRA is a separate entity, correct? So whatever total bonding capacity that they have outstanding, it's not tacked into the cities, right? So when you look at the city's bonding, you don't add in the PRA's bonding obligations.
On this specific obligation, that is correct. This obligation is solely backed by state revenues collected within the district itself.
Okay, but as a general principle, it would be if it wasn't.
As a general principle, any of the special districts' bonds that are issued by the PRA are not backed by general obligation bonds of the city itself. You are correct in that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And we made sure that back when we passed other resolutions allowing for the PRA to be the vehicle or the mechanism for this process. I think what we're asking, being asked tonight is pass a resolution that does the same thing for the refinancing, correct?
Exactly. The transaction is now much simpler. It solely relies on both state revenues that are generated in Pawtucket, as well as the guarantee of the state to step in and support these if there's ever a shortfall.
And the savings is basically for the state. The city is kind of out of the picture relative to the game.
That's correct. This obviously is a project that reflects a great deal of coordination and cooperation between the city, the Pawtucket Redevelopment Authority, and the state. Being a good fiscal steward to the outstanding debt by doing things like taking advantage of opportunities to save the taxpayers money is a good reflection of fiscal stewardship on behalf of both the city and the PRA.
Agreed.
I was going to say the other thing that came up in the meeting too, was that these could be called up again and be refinanced. You said anywhere from eight to 10 years from now, depending, I guess, right?
Counsel, that's a great note for me to also step in with additional detail. The debt is not being extended beyond the original amortization, the number of years that it's to be paid out. In addition to that, the city still reserves the right of the redevelopment authority to refinance this debt in the standard 10-year horizon, should that be advantageous. We're now a couple of years into that debt, so in about eight years, the city will be able to take a second look at this, and if rates are lower, refinance the bonds again.
Council Wilder.
Yes, Council President, thank you. And as Chairman of Finance, on behalf of my committee, and some of them have already pointed it out too, we really do appreciate Zai for, you know, dumbing it down for us and explaining it in layman's terms, and as well as Mark Haywood to turn around and get this communicated to us so that we could turn around and understand it and get and move forward as quickly as possible because there are, there are things tied to this that that we just wanted to see move along. The faster it moves along, the more we reap the benefit of it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you, Zai. We already have a motion and seconded by both Councilor Maran and Councilor Rubio. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? Again, the recommendation from the Finance Committee is for approval. In that case, clerk will call a roll. President Mercer? Yes. Councilor Rougeau?
Yes.
Council Gregor?
Yes.
Council Moran?
Yes.
Council Moreno? Council Rubio?
Yes.
Council Skoviat?
Yes.
Council Wilder?
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Item number three, fiscal presentation and discussion with fiscal advisor, PFM Financial Advisors LLC regarding the city's bonding status and future capacity given by Zai Kamas Saag. I'm not sure how to pronounce it. I'm sorry. Zai, okay, great. It's perfect for me too. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And Director, Director, PFM Financial Advisors LLC, motion is to open up this presentation. Zai.
No, just a second. A second, man. It's been moved by Councilor Rougeau, second by Councilor Gregor, that a fiscal presentation discussion with the fiscal advisor, PFM Financial Advisors LLC regarding the city's bonding status and future capacity given by its Director of Financial Advisors. Zai, if you could step forward, please. So this is really why we're scheduling this meeting for tonight. I know you gave this presentation to council leadership a couple of weeks ago, a few days in advance of giving it to the school department. And I believe you gave this exact presentation to the school committee chair, the deputy chair, superintendent, somebody from the mayor's office, and a couple of folks from RIDE, correct?
That's correct.
And you're about to give us the exact same presentation, maybe a syllable or two off, but fiscally the same presentation you gave them, yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to just mention that one of the members of the school committee is here, Kimberly Grant. I had sent out an invitation to any members of the school committee to come. I know that the chair and the vice chair had already seen this, heard this and were able to digest it. I didn't know if it had filtered down to the rest of the members, so I welcome committee woman Grant for being here. Thank you. Okay, Zai, tell us what we need to know.
Well, it felt like an appropriate time to stop and reflect on the work that the city is doing, working with the schools to build new school facilities, but also to look forward into the future, given some recent concerns that were raised about future full school facility plans and what the realistic financial capacity was of the city to take on additional school projects. If I could briefly just acknowledge the good work that is happening here in the city. Pawtucket is currently underway on one of the most ambitious school reconstruction and redevelopment portfolios in the entire state. You're looking at a project list right now with the Unified High School being completed of $440 million. All right, $440 million. For perspective, when you look at large projects in the state, I think there's a certain bridge that comes to mind for a lot of people, right? That project's about $430 million. So I want you to realize that what you're in the process of taking on right now as a city is a massive construction project by any measure within this state. And working with both the administration, the council, and the school department, we have been working very hard since we've been retained to coordinate the actual process of how the funding flows to make sure these projects get done with the finances they need in place. And so stepping back for a little bit, we're about midway through the overall portfolio of projects, but we're just starting to spend the largest chunk of this funding on the high school projects themselves. Right now, the existing outstanding debt for the school is somewhere around $165 million. That is about to jump to $435 million just with the Unified High School projects that are being taken on. Now, that is certainly a big number, but thanks to the support from the state, roughly 80% of that debt service ultimately gets subsidized with school housing aid reimbursement that's received. The challenge that you have is that that 20% ish that the city still has to carry is nonetheless a very big number. It is going to more than double the debt service that you have dedicated towards school buildings right now. You have a sheet in front of you, a spreadsheet, and the easiest way to read the bottom line of the spreadsheet is that bottom right-hand corner, $4.275 million. What that represents is the amount that you need to increase debt service by to ultimately cover the debt that's projected for all current school projects that are under construction underway. What that represents is the amount that you will need to increase debt service by to cover school debt service. So right now, if you look to the left-hand column there, net school debt service, this is after reimbursement funding that comes in. You get up to about 3.7 million. That's about where the peak is. And that's just for the school projects that are already completed. When you add in the high school debt, that pushes you up to about $7.5 million. And so the tricky part of all of this, and this is where the continued coordination with the schools is so important, is how to bridge the gap between getting the construction done and making sure we keep having the cash on hand that's needed to keep building before the state steps in and actually starts providing the reimbursement. The state doesn't begin reimbursing until you have a certificate of occupancy. And so for the next several year period, the city is on the hook for the entirety of whatever interest accrues on bonds outstanding until the state steps in. You can see that big chunk of funding that comes in from the state in 2029 when the school is projected to be complete. That's going to be a good day, but until then, you have the city carrying interest on nearly $300 million in debt that'll be outstanding. And so what that's going to require is a high level of coordination with the school committee, with the project team, to ensure that we're not borrowing any more than necessary at any given point in time and that we are borrowing on a timely basis. If we don't, what you see there a little bit further up in column 10 is the incremental impact to the city's budget. And this looks like a tsunami of debt coming on and then a rapid drop off in that debt. That is a rough thing to absorb into the city's budget. A 1% increase in taxes, as you well know, is going to generate about an additional $1 million. All things being equal, if there is a coordination between the schools and the city, just on debt service for the schools alone, you'd be looking at an increase of 6% to the city's tax rate for two years in a row. Now, that would be followed by a drop off in debt service, but that is a very, very substantial increase, particularly in the backs of what the city has just experienced. If you step back and think, okay, so you have a rapid increase, but then you have a rapid decrease. Can we smooth this out a little bit? Can we smooth this out? And smoothing that out is that $4.2 million we detailed below. So the idea here is what you try and do by coordinating with the schools is get that to about a $1.003 million, $1.005 million a year increase over the next several years, so that is a gradual increase. That's still going to consume over a, you know, percentage point increase in the property taxes. You combine that with likely increases to salaries for personnel, you very quickly hit the 4% cap in the state. And so you've really got to coordinate carefully with the schools to make sure that you don't blow property taxpayers out of the water with a pretty substantial increase. That being said.
Can I just interrupt for one second? So I want to be clear that none of this is a surprise. This is, this is the product of careful planning, not overextending, and putting together a path forward to do all this ambitious work. And right now, we're talking about the carrying costs of upwards of $330 million or up to $330 million over the course of the next five years till we get a CEO, correct?
That's correct.
Not to say our bond capacity has been eclipsed. It's to say that we have a carefully scripted plan in place that is spelled out right here.
That is correct. And this right here spells out what happens if we aren't able to keep coordinating as well as we have with the schools with the project team. If we're able to coordinate, what we should be able to do is to limit that annual increase to about a million and a half per year in additional debt service. But that is serious work and serious coordination. What that means is that we would take, instead of doing two big borrowings, we break that into smaller borrowings so we're not carrying the interest as long as possible. What that means is that we would invest bonds that aren't needed, the proceeds that aren't needed, helping us offset the interest expense to minimize that spike. The reason coordination is so difficult is that one of the things that the rating agencies look at when you go to market and they give you the essentially grade that you're going to market with for how risky or not risky your investment is, is how well you're coordinating with the school department on a certain project. That coordination and slip-ups in that coordination have ramifications in the market. And it's important to us, if we're intending on being in the market once every six months moving forward, that the two parties continue to work in cooperation on the project.
Council Wilder, you had a question?
I appreciate that.
Appreciate that, Zai. And I want to try and wrap my head around it too, because you've also, you just indicated that we've got a $4 million increase to taxes that we are going to have to provide for. And it looks like, and one of the things that you said was that we're probably going to have to go over 6% in order to accommodate it, which we just did in our last tax increase. So now. So now, if we don't work together to do it in smaller increments, which is, like you said, $1.2 million, basically, then we've got whatever we've negotiated for the unions that work for City Hall and everything else, that, well, I've already told this to President Mercer. I don't intend on going back over 4%. I don't care what anybody says. But the other thing is, I have to be open to the reality, too, of how do we pay our bills and make sure that we don't fall into a negative concept? Because we've always had that with the bond rating, keeping the bond rating in play, because it does affect us, too. But that is, and that is only the debt service that we're paying on the schools, correct? That's not anything else to do with the maintenance of effort that we give them already, the $32 million that we hand them. And someone else pointed out that we micromanage another $500,000. Again, it's money we don't have, but we turn around and asking our taxpayers to continue to provide us with more money just to meet our obligations. So I think you're right that it needs to be, the discussion and the collaboration with the school department needs to be a lot better than what it is right now. And, you know, I'm, as chairman of finance, I understood, and it's aggravated me for a long period of time, that the, see, city council has always been told that the school committee cannot carry a surplus. And then we find out they've got a $15 million surplus. And then we approached that group and we asked them to turn around and work with the city to lower the burden on the taxpayers and told there's no interest. So we left it at that and went on to another day to turn around and figure out what our scheme was going to be to make sure to level fund the taxpayers. And I'm already hearing things that they now are and going to be in a $7 million deficit for their next coming fiscal year and are going to be looking for the city to turn around and do it. And I'm already being told that the city's already going to have to anticipate a $4 million increase in just debt service, and we're going to have to try to figure out that. So I appreciate the warning that you're giving us. I appreciate the comments that you're giving us to turn around and work together, because people do have to pull their head out of somewhere and figure this out. Because the last thing I'm going to do is tell the taxpayers in this city, I'm going to increase taxes again to give it money to people that don't know how to manage it. So, and I'm going to try and manage it to the best of my ability. But I want to thank you again for your configuration here. Thank you.
Thank you, Cas- Cas Rubio.
Sai, thanks again for all the information. A lot to dissect, but I think that the biggest word you're saying is coordination, also known as collaboration, right? So, but before I, I guess, what does that mean in this, as we move forward? We need to collaborate, yes, but how do we do that? How do we go about coordinating and phasing all of this out so that we're not impacting taxpayers come next year when we're doing budgeting again?
Yeah, I'll talk a little about the work we've done, and thank you for the opportunity to build on that. And I do just want to note quickly that our capacity with the city is very focused on bonding itself and the debt half of the equation, not operations. But we are happy to have colleagues come back on that issue. One of the things we implemented when we were retained by the city is a monthly meeting with both the project construction team and the school's finance team that they have, working with the city's finance team as well. And at those monthly meetings, we do a projection out as to where we stand on the cash that's needed for construction. The reason that's so important is that the inclination of certain bodies, and this isn't just relative to the city, but elsewhere, is to get the money when they can, put it in a bank account, and let it sit there until they need to draw it down on it. That is enormously expensive to do, and you can see the financial impact of having to do that upfront if you can't have a relationship of trust between the bodies. And so through that monthly coordination that we have, we're able to delay the borrowing for as long as possible. But when we go to the market, go to the market with very good coordination and very good information for the market that they trust. And so they're not looking at information we handed them and then opening up the newspaper and seeing a completely contradictory statement coming from one of the respective governing bodies. Everybody's singing from the same hymn book on this. That's important. What's probably also important is when you look forward into the future, that you be realistic about the fact that two truths can exist at the same time. There can be a need for additional new school facilities in the future, and there can also be very realistic financial constraints that you have to work together to navigate. And so there's nothing wrong with saying, today, where we sit, we don't have the capacity to do this, but we acknowledge that we need to find a way, and we will work on that way for that day in the future when we do have capacity. And that day in the future not being an uncertain thing, but being something that you all jointly agree you will work towards. We will get farther working in that style of partnership and collaboration than we will through an alternative approach that's taken. Does that answer the question? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Russo, then Councilor Gregor.
Thank you for this presentation, Sai. Really, really do appreciate it. You know, I'm looking at these numbers. Obviously, yeah, we need some type of collaboration with the school department to help get this to where it's more palatable per year to get to that 4.275 over the three-year period that I'm seeing. But these numbers just clearly tell me we have no room, realistically, to take on any of all the projects, school-wise or city-wise at this point, because our bond capacity is maxed out from what I can see here, at least for the upcoming three years or so. And, you know, we got other projects that, you know, are in need as well, and, you know, I can't see us, like, we're working with, you know, the City Hall Committee, see what we can do with that. And I don't see, you know, I don't see any wiggle room here right now, based in, look, we all signed up for the school projects. I'd sign up for them again. They were so needed desperately. This new high school is a game changer. But now we're at a point where we gotta, you know, slow it down a bit so we can catch up, because these are high numbers. Council President mentioned about speaking about millions of dollars. When you say the word millions, it's a heavy number. And, yeah, you got, if we can't go up 6% on the next couple of tax years, people are hurting out there. People are hurting out there. We do the best we can. I think we did a great job investing in the schools. I would sign up for them again, 100%. But, you know, I think we're at a point where, you know, going out to bond any project right now would be truly challenging and could really disrupt our financial future, big time. Am I reading that correctly by saying that?
Touch on a couple of things there, because you managed to touch on a bunch of things. First, I want to acknowledge that you are all here on the eve of an important holiday for our country, looking at debt, which is a weighty topic to be handling on a day like this. And so I commend all of you for taking the time to gather on this topic. When we think about debt capacity, there are two lenses that we think through. One is the aggregate burden on the community itself. How big is that weight that is hanging over every taxpayer? And is that reasonable compared to other communities? To that end, until you get out to 2029, where you have that consistent flowback in from the state, the city realistically doesn't have capacity to take on more of that weight. But at that point in time, that's the point in time where you want to think about what you might be able to do. The second lens you look through, rather than just the aggregate weight of that debt hanging over you, is what does that mean for your budget and tax increases on a year-on-year basis? And that's where that additional $1.5 million a year for the next three years is going to be needed, or in aggregate, you know, look at that as a $4.3 million increase. The cooperation, we keep touching on the collaboration, as Council Rubio mentioned, really is to make sure you can smooth that out, right? It's, if everybody's rolling in the same direction, you can get through that choppy water and cut through it. But if you can't, you're going to hit that capacity ceiling way earlier than you should. So I think that's a very good point that you made.
Yeah, because the next three years or so, it's, until that reimbursement starts really coming in, it, we're in, you know, a little bit of a tough spot here.
And the scale is a very real thing. Again, think about that this is a project that the scale, the sheer dollar number is on scale with the Washington Bridge. That's a big deal. That's a big, and it's an investment that you're making in the future of this community.
If you don't mind, I'm making one point, just, just one point.
Sure.
And I, but, and I look at it and it just, even before, we usually wait till May before we start talking about taxes. But given trying, whatever we try to do, we're starting out with almost a 2% tax increase right off the bat. Because again, we've got other contracts that we're going to have to deal with and everything else. So we've only basically got 2%, if that, to work with. That's the only point I wanted to make.
Okay. Councilor Gregor, did you still have a question?
Yes, I do. Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I'm just curious now, in terms, you said you get a, city has to be able to monitor everything and hope everything is stable, otherwise these figures are going to go up, right? Especially in terms of the project managers who are before any concrete support is already talking about excessive amount of, of a projection in terms of the budget. How do you keep that in line with this? Because these figures are going to be, they're going to fluctuate, right?
So we don't manage the actual construction funds themselves from the lens of, is the project getting built on time, on budget? We are not your onsite construction manager in that way. But the easiest way to watch is to watch that monthly flow of funds to make sure it's staying on track. And so I chaired a water utility for a number of years, as some of you know, and one of the best things we did was put in meters that build out on a monthly basis. And the reason that was valuable was that if somebody had a leak in their water system, right? They would notice the spike before they got handed some massive bill for an entire quarter. They could see it on a monthly basis. And so it helped with leak detection. In the same way, having monthly check-in meetings where we are able to monitor the cash that's needed for the project is also a good chance for the city's team and the school's team to sit there together to look at the cash flows on the project and to say, okay, this is either wildly off where we thought it was going to be, or we're right on track, or we're a little bit slower than we expected.
Did you have another question, Councilor, or do you want to come back? I know, Councilor Moran wanted, Councilor Moran.
Thank you, Councilor Gregor. Just a couple of questions and then, well, I should say a couple of comments, observations. So would you say, based on what you were just telling us, that would you say or recommend unofficially or officially, like a moratorium or a freeze on any type of new school construction spending or even renovations of an existing school, at least through 2029? Don't even consider anything until post-2029. That was number one. Number two, you made an excellent point earlier saying that, you know, we're all excited because we have a Unified High School coming in the near future, and 80% of that will be covered, you know, by the state, and then the 20% we would owe. But that doesn't happen until there's a certificate of occupancy. So that doesn't happen, at least like you said, for at least three or four years down the road or five years down the road. So there are, there are consequences, even though it's a rosy picture in the sense that, oh, wow, we're doing an 80/20 split, but we've got to cover sort of our butt, in a sense, for the next four to five years. And then Councilor Wildon, he's chair, the Finance Committee is mentioning he's hearing rumors about a $7 million deficit potentially for the next school budget. And I don't know if you work, maybe you probably don't work with them directly on that. I know you work with their people on the finance end of it. But if you take that all and put it into a pot, in a pot and try to mix it up, it just doesn't, it doesn't, to me, it wouldn't taste that good right now, because it'd just be very difficult. Are we going to be really be able to cover ourselves and try to keep taxes as low as possible? Because again, we went over the 6%, it went up to 6% the last time. I just don't see how we get out of that again, because we're already, you're saying, 4.2 million in the hole. If they have a deficit of $7 million and we can't, and if we have a moratorium for doing anything till at least 2029, I just don't see how we get out of this. Like, it's almost like you're in a paper bag and you can't. I just don't see how we get out of it. I know you, you're doing the right thing by saying, let's all meet together once a month and stuff. I guess I'm just jumping ahead saying, I hope you can come up with something, because it just seems extremely, there's just no, like, as Councilor Russo said earlier, no wiggle room. It's just, it seems like you're just boxed in. I just don't see how any of this is going to come up, like, happy for everybody or rosy pictured. I don't know if you agree with that or not, but there's a lot I just said, but it's, it's just, it, it's just, it just doesn't seem like a great thing that's happening going forward. And I get it, we certainly pay you to advise us and everything, and I'm impressed. I think you're doing a great job. I just think, I think, I think if I'm you, I'd be extremely frustrated, but that's just me, you know, so.
I wouldn't be doing this job, period, if I didn't think that my skill set was immediately needed here, right? And here's the reality that we all need to be ready for looking forward, which is that our jobs as public policy decision-makers, and I don't just mean in the city Pawtucket, I can say this in just about every community in the state, are about to be a whole lot more challenging than they have been for the past decade. Part of that is what we're dealing with in Washington. Part of that is that we are making investments that have been necessary for decades. And you and this council and the schools and this community deserve a lot of credit for taking on a huge chunk of those problems head-on, but you got to be realistic that there's more coming down the pike. The term moratorium, I'm hesitant to use because of the sense of finality that it has. As you move into a difficult period like this, the need to be flexible and open-minded is going to be increasingly important, but also to be realistic about the limitations that exist. We are talking about the financial limitations right now of additional debt. How challenging it is to deal with what you have, and to Council President Mercer's point, there's a plan for how to tackle that. I'm just being clear that if we don't follow that plan, this is what you're looking at. If we follow that plan, we collaborate, we can get through this on a reasonable basis. The second half of it, though, and Councilman Gregor touched on this briefly, is the realities of construction, which is an enormously complicated business. I'm glad that I'm not having to manage that right now. But even if you started today and you said, okay, we want to go and renovate a new school building, you're looking at between six and 18 months of just engineering work. That isn't your big cash draw that you need, but you have to plan. And these projects, particularly when you're renovating buildings, are enormously complex. And so if the bodies are able to get together and say, okay, let's level set on where we are today, but let's also be honest that in the future, this is what we'd like to do. You've got to start planning today to realistically be able to start a project in 2029. And the only way you have people moving towards that is if you know that there's a potential pathway there and not a done, and, you know, business stopped moving forward. That's tricky and that's hard, right? But that is the reality, that there are no quick solutions here. But at the same time, if you don't start now, you're not going to be ready when that moment comes.
But you feel positive, though, that we potentially could, as long as we're collaborating and meeting and stuff, that eventually we'd be able to at least go forward and come up with something, some sort of a plan. I know we're following a plan, but just, you know, make sure that we don't affect the taxpayers too negatively going forward, you know?
Right. Well, and task one is build the most ambitious school project in the state and work together to make sure that taxpayers don't face two back-to-back 6% tax increases. We can help you do that. That's possible. Task two is what are those projects that you need to start thinking about collaborating on now, knowing that realistically, between financial capacity and the logistics of building a school, that's not going to start for a couple of years into the future? That's a lot of work. It's a lot of trust in each other that you have to have. But I do think that's the work that this council should be considering right now.
Thank you. Sai, I'm kind of probably going to be a little bit all over the place, but the purpose of this is to be, of this presentation tonight is to be realistic, not fatalistic. Would you agree?
Perfectly put.
And we've got a plan in place that starts with the project manager working with the school department, but more so with the city's finance department. They're the folks that figure out when to go out and bond, so we're not taking out $330 million, putting it on a shelf, paying interest on it, and not using, right? So that's, we're being realistic, right? You know, you've been doing this a long time and when city councils, whether it's us or anybody else, put bond questions on the ballot, there is an implied contract with the voters that if you vote for this, we can handle it, right? And that's what we've done. We've, it's an ambitious project, as Councilor Russo said. I think we'd all sign up to do it again. Not every member was on the city council when we first broached the idea of this ambitious project. It was, it was to fix Tolman and Shea at one point. It was to build a new Winters. It was to build a new, a new Baldwin. We all bought in. We put it on the ballot. We asked the voters to support it, but implicit in that is that if you say yes, we are telling you we can afford this, and we are not going to put the city in financial harm. Would you agree with that statement that that's how bond questions are supposed to operate?
When they're done right, yes.
And would you agree that we've, you know, we talk about capacity and it seems fatalistic, but we have a good plan. We've, we've put together a good plan to do everything we said we were going to do. And you hit it the nail on the head. We're addressing 80 years of neglect. And not just here with other buildings, with, with the pension, with all the, this council has really addressed everything head-on, but as responsibly, and with the mayor's office, I'm not saying we did it, but, you know, responsibly as possible for all of those things, OPEB, pension reform, what to do with City Hall, and building new schools. I guess what I'm trying to say is, we're on a good path. We just have to stay the course and continue to be responsible. Would, would that be the best- Would that be the best way to explain it?
Yes.
I don't want anybody, I don't want people to think the sky is falling.
Correct.
But the sky would be falling if we don't put beams up.
Is that what I said?
To hold it up.
Well, I want to let everybody know the sky could fall, I'm just saying. I'm still checking little, just sit there. I'm still concerned, I'm sorry.
In your professional opinion, we are doing things as we should. We've known about the ups and downs, how we can smooth, how we can avoid a 6.5% tax increase, but we've got to stay the course on the path we've set, right? We have not been irresponsible.
That is correct.
We are not on the doorstep of doom.
Correct.
But we could be if we start acting irresponsibly.
Correct.
Thank you. Do you have another question, Councilor?
In your professional opinion, would you consider this to be a prudent position for the city to be in, or overly ambitious to be taking on this project with such a close margin in terms of which way it could go?
Financially, it's prudent. I think it is ambitious from a policy perspective, and I would say in the right ways. You are making an investment in the future of this community. And I think the public education is one of the best places that communities can make an investment. But at the same time, this city has shown a remarkable level of sophistication in pursuing other investments it needs, whether it's your core infrastructure or economic development. So this body as a whole, every council has disagreements here and there, but has taken on a very ambitious portfolios, projects, and you are executing accordingly to plan in a financially responsible way. It's good news for the taxpayers, it's good news for future generations in this community. I think the challenge is that you're hitting that point where it starts to get difficult. And it was expected to get difficult. I'm assuming it was always projected to be part of the process. You need to continue to figure out ways to move forward through that, to carry the momentum that you've built so far, and to keep realizing the full potential of this community in ways that are financially responsible.
Councilor Rubio.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for talking, President, about not being fatalistic. It's, it is definitely not fatalistic. We just, the next couple of years have to put, you know, caution with any projects coming up, because obviously, we approve, we approved all the school projects with this tremendous reimbursement. And the reimbursement will come to fruition in a few years. So you're right, it's not fatalistic. We just, the next couple of years, you gotta take a step back and, you know, really address the impending extra amount of debt service that we're incurring. But once we get over that hump, that's when we can start talking about other projects and what have you. But you're right, it isn't fatalistic, it's just the next couple of years, you just, we got to be very, very cautious, because this is what we're facing.
Cy, can I just ask one more question? It might not really be up your alley, but Councilor Gregor was talking about overruns for the high school, right, or projected overruns. With school reimbursement and school bond funding, it is $330 million, right? RIDE comes up with a calculation of, okay, we will reimburse based on $330 million. So if there are cost overruns, it doesn't go over 330, right? What we're really talking about is stripping things, right? As opposed to going to 335 or 340, because we would have to absorb the full freight of that, right? So if we're not going to go to 340, if we're not going to go to 350, then it means staying under 330 means a lesser product. Is that accurate?
I am not a construction manager, but
That's fine.
I believe the term they use is value engineering.
Yes. For lesser than.
Stripping, it's called stripping.
But it does imply, you still have to meet the objectives that you commit to with RIDE, but that does imply changes to the actual ultimate end product that you're receiving. Hopefully not ones that impact the safe, dry nature of the classrooms that our students need to succeed. I would note, though, not to overlook the fact that the city does have a substantial portfolio of school construction projects it will have to address. And as long as it remains proactive in this, as long as it remains collaborative on this, you can work towards solutions. But what you certainly don't want is RIDE coming in and trying to force your hand on these situations if it doesn't believe you're advancing towards progress on need for kids to have safe, dry schools. That's the Damocles sword that hangs over you, that you have to be aware of and just consistently engaged on. Be realistic about your financial constraints, but to your point, don't be fatalistic. Continue to take on those issues head-on.
And RIDE, you know, the safe and dry, I think that started with Governor Raimondo, actually before she was Governor Raimondo, I think, but, and it's carried over to RIDE. But I think RIDE's newest mantra or secondary mantra is newer and fewer. Is that, have you heard that term?
I cannot speak to RIDE's policies.
Gotcha. Okay, does anybody else have any questions? We've kept Cy here quite some time, but I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any more questions, unless it's from Councilor. All right.
What did you say, Day of Doom, was it? I like that, that line, what did you say?
Doomsday?
No, you said Day of Doom or Doom.
The doorstep of doom.
Doorstep of doom, I like that. I didn't think that's
Write that one down.
professing, but hey.
Or leave.
How about a, how about a quick comment? Well, I mean, don't make it quick, I'm just, we do have to ask him a question.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. You know, some of the words that I had just marked down was collaboration, teamwork, impossible if we're not together on this. If you go to market, making sure things are not in the newspaper, that affects the market when you go to bond, proactive. And I think in the, I'm glad that this presentation was given to our leadership, to the administration, to the school committee leadership, and to the school department. And I think the last few weeks has been, or the last month or so, on the relationship, I don't even know what I want to call the relationship, but there's been some tension and I think narratives around our capacity and schools that need some fixing and all that stuff. And so having this presentation be clear to all parties, I think, was really important. And I hope those words that I have circled, the, you know, it's going to be impossible if we're not together, and important to have coordination, and teamwork, and having conversations, I'm hoping that our leadership and the leadership of the school department and the school committee take all this information and continue to work on that relationship, so that when it's time to be proactive and think about the future, that is in a positive way. And I think now that we have numbers in front of us and facts and data, I'm really hoping that we see that. Thank you, that was just my comment.
I guess you could have said. Anything else? Okay, Cy, we really appreciate you coming down, all the hard work you're doing with the administration and with the project managers, so we appreciate it. You're keeping us out of harm's way, and hopefully we're going to continue to row all in the same direction.
My pleasure, thank you for all your
Thanks very much. I think so, yes.
All right, no further business coming for Pawtucket City Council. I make a motion that we adjourn.
But move by Councilor Rubio, second by Councilor Wildonhan, we adjourn. Any discussion?